Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming. We are going to call to order the special meeting of June 7th of the North Board of Education. It is 6:43. First on our agenda is an awards presentation.
That's me. So I have the privilege of awarding one, two, three, four awards this evening to our students who are in the audience. And the first award is the Adele Win Service Cup Award. The Adele Win Service Cup Award is named for a former teacher at Hotel School and is given to the student who goes the extra mile. The student that rises above the desire to strike back, get even, or settle a score. The student is slow to anger and quick to forgive. This year, this award goes to Lila Weaving. The next award is the Frank C. Riley Creative Writing Award. This award is given in memory of Frank C. Riley, family member of the Munch family. This award is annually presented to the student who has done outstanding work in creative writing. And this year, I'm pleased to announce that this award goes to Lila Weaving. The next award is the Jean Keeler Memorial Award. This is named for a former teacher at Hotel and is presented to the student who shows sensitivity and compassion towards his or her fellow students, along with a respect for each person's differences. This year, this award goes to Lila Weaving. The Michael J. Molbel Award is presented to the student who demonstrates a love for music as well as shows a potential as a musician. Although Mr. Molbel had a particular fondness for country music, the student chosen may show interest in any variety of genres. The award recipient should also have a generous and giving spirit toward fellow students, teachers, and the community, as these were characteristics that Mr. Molbel espoused. This year, the award goes to Rex Frick.
Well, congratulations to all of our award recipients. I have to say, I've had the very good pleasure of getting to know each of these four students and couldn't agree more with the things that were said about them for those awards. I really do congratulate you. I'm sad that you'll be leaving the school because I'm sad not to see you as much anymore. But I know that you're going to be doing great things and know that your whole school community is really very proud of you. I would say that, I know that some of you know this already, but I think it's fair to say that we did make changes this year to the way the awards were given out, that we are celebrating these individual awards here at the board levels that we can really give each of the students some time and special attention so that they can be honored and appreciated, that their families can really enjoy just what a great job they're giving. So thank you for taking the time to come tonight. Thank you, Mary No, specifically for helping to bring this change in our award ceremony into fruition. I think it's a really, really nice thing. Can't wait to see you guys at graduation next week. Thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. But also, we will not put it against you if you decide that you would like to.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Rex. Nice job.
Okay, next on our agenda is public comments. The North Board of Education welcomes public comment. We ask that all comments be limited to five minutes, and we'd like people to know that it is our policy that we listen very carefully. It's our policy to not respond immediately to public comment, but rather, as she said, follow up after the question. Erin, would you like to address the public comments?
Do you want to give them?
No, not that.
She said she was going to be a second.
Okay, then we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of May 30. Everyone get a copy of the minutes in their packet?
We approve the minutes of the meeting.
I'll second them. Okay, motion made. Seconded, all those in favor? Propose? Okay, now motion here. Two obsessions. Okay. Force funds. Is there any force funds that you know of?
We do have the time and the location, but it teaches the basket.
Everyone should have received that in their packets. We have any questions or any highlights we'd like to mention? We do have some business we need to authorize the superintendent to transfer line items as needed. Since we do not meet until August and the budget will kind of finalize in those days, and money will be finalized in those days, we need to make a motion to authorize the superintendent to transfer line items as needed about this budget regen.
I'm looking to authorize the superintendent to transfer line items when the budget is needed, balanced budget. Like in 30.
A motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just have a question. So as we know, we need to balance the budget. If we have any excess, any extra funds, we want to talk about that. All right, so just, you know. There's anything that you need to have fixed before the money's sent back? Do we need to be sure that we have a fix in the mailroom? All right, it could go to June 30.
All right, so you're going to talk about that. But authorize, we're going to move to that.
Yes, of course. Yes.
Okay, motion made. Seconded, all those in favor? Propose? Extension? Okay, motion here.
So on that topic, Kathy has so adopted the awards for the year. This is the time of the year that we begin to look at all of the line items. Where are we over, where are we under? And it's still a rough year because we still have a lot of outstanding invoices. We have a lot of payables. We have many bills we're still going to go out. So we can go through, and I'm happy, Kathy's happy to answer any questions we have. But here's the big takeaway. Once we cover the building improvement overages and some of the areas that we worked over, we are going to have approximately $60,000. Now, from that money, we're going to take the camera monitor and do the cameras. When we had an advance come out to say they were going to give us a second estimate, that they said that they believe they could do the camera job less than $13,000. But in the process, they identified several wiring issues, and there will be some additional expenses for wiring. So being really conservative, we were hoping to get the vote before this meeting. Did not come in. Thought we were saying it's going to be more than 13. We don't expect it to be more than 20. But if we even kept that ballpark, we're looking at about a $40,000 amount. Now, again, it's our best guess at this point based on what Kathy was coming in. What I would suggest is that sometimes we need to be there to report the end of the month. We have our finance committee get together. At that point, Kathy might go over all of the numbers, the specific numbers to know how much we actually have left. In the meantime, we, I believe, tonight, before the finance committee take up the agenda, the item about the non-lapsing account, the data request for improvement. They had said we needed to have a formal request put on our agenda.
So we need to, we need to vote to answer the question.
No, I thought we had, why don't we take a minute before they meet? We just have somebody send my note.
They meet next week, so they...
Oh, okay. We just need to make sure that we have a formal request to put the non-lapsing account topic on their budget. That's where they will vote to either 1% or 2%. So if they vote to 2%, they could put as much as about $24,000 that we returned into the account. If they vote to allow 2%, it could be $48,000. I don't know what for, but this is the special one we have here, so.
So the reason you have to redo that is because the original one has an expiration. So we want to ask them to revisit it, and we want to ask them to write it a little bit differently so that it would be, you know, going to be used year to year, so it doesn't have to be requested to.
They write to prove it.
They could approve it each year, but, you know, they're going to... I mean, just the idea that there's a non-lapsing could, yes. And we might want to ask, I know that the statute allows for 2% of the total budget, and they had agreed to 1%. Also, in the past, they had put in a stipulation that the funds be used only for capital improvement projects. I don't know if that is something they want to revisit, or actually they would revisit. Because as I read the statute, it specifically says that it should be to support educational projects. So that seems to be in conflict with the statute.
Well, I'm not sure that it's in conflict, and I can get a legal opinion if you would like that. But they did put in at the bottom of that agreement that the board could approach them for money for other things. I don't know if they can put conditions on it, or if it's just that, you know, we have a non-lapsing, it's not going to be used for educational purposes. If they can put any conditions on that or not, I'm not sure. If they can or they can't, I will get a legal opinion on that.
I'm sorry. In the meantime, I will make sure I reply whether that officially has to be added to the agenda. I think I lost track of the conversation. I can't remember.
And I don't know if it makes the difference, but, you know, it just seems to me such a smart thing for them to do to put as much money as they can into that account that we have to give back, because at the end of the day, we're going to have major expenses, and it's going to come out of the taxpayer. If we have something in an account, at least it mitigates those large amounts to some extent. But at the end of the day, they need to decide if that's something they want to do. Otherwise, anything, say, they think 1%, anything above that that we give back to go, again, to the town, fix a bridge or road, so any of this money that goes back is going to benefit North Board. The question I would have is, we know we're going to do the cameras. We have over-spending, we spend some money in some lines that address some of the critical resources that we needed. We feel that we're in a good place. So Warren and I are not saying, oh, that, say, $40,000 that we have left over, we really would want to buy this, we really, really need this. However, if it's the board's will to look at some other things that we could spend down a little bit more, we could do that and bring that to our committee for discussion. But we want to have a much better idea if we mend our, sort of, what that part of the budget is. Yeah, the important thing is, if you just kind of see the building, you're missing the playground. All of the cam.
How about additional lighting? Now, additional lighting is something that the county is talking about doing for the playground, but perhaps it's something that, since it does really benefit this school and the area, maybe we should consider taking that.
I'm not sure what, how, it will come a short turnaround. We have to get a full, you know, make a commitment to put that light. The conversations that I've had with Matt about, like, the kind of lighting of state lighting, deciding that, like, we might need another pole, it might not help that I want a pole. So I don't know. It might be a little bit of a bigger project and just add another, what do you think?
I think it's worth a little investigation, without getting too involved with this. I know one of the issues, we've got quite a bit of vandalism really on our playground. And so more light, I know even with the camera, we haven't been able to see what is going on. So more light will not only deter vandalism, it will make that area more usable and more user-friendly, and also help us to keep it secure and be able to figure out what happened to people there.
So we'll see what people can get from our information. And again, we said that we want to turn all the boards, and if we want to set a date, either we recall the end, if you might call a special meeting with the board to review the budget by the end of June, or if you want the finance committee to convene, and that's not a matter of course, or the board to make the response.
Well, what is, what are people's availability at the end of June? It's a very busy time of year. So try to get up, it will be it.
So like on the 28th or the 29th, we should have all of that. And then we would know what we are going to return to the town on that period, because we have to have the exact budget that we thought of that at the end of the day on June 30.
How's the 30th look? If the 30th could work? I couldn't believe it. All right, well, I kind of like that idea of having your board meet again, discuss those final numbers. The numbers are always such a question that we, as board members, need to know and have to, really have to think about and talk about. As many people as can be involved in those decisions.
I can do the period. What time, what do you need to be in?
That's true, it's on Thursday, right?
So I have a couple appointments that I would have to work around, but to tell me what the best plan for the weekend for January 2.
We deal with teachers, so, let's see, so you'll be, so you could do, what if we did like on?
What's supposed to be, because I am going to be guilty. So.
Afternoon is best, it's easier.
Afternoon is good, okay. On the 30th, like, 3 o'clock?
What's the 3 o'clock?
Or 4 o'clock, or later. I presume, you know, anytime after 3 or 5. Is it good for you?
3 o'clock, 3:00.
Okay, and by then, we will have, you know, the final numbers. And hopefully before then, you'll have information on what it costs to put the vision lighting on the playground. And then it will come up with the number that we'll need for the community. So can we ask? You know, if Kathy didn't, we would make a motion to request that. And always go into, like, say, the playground, you know, and songs, something, you know, like, we have to give back, say, consciousness in a certain respect. Can we?
So if, when we give it back itself?
Yeah, yeah, it's a condition. It's like, when they give us money, they tell us how much they give us, they can't help how to spend it. When we give it back, we can't, we can't help how to spend it. But if they vote to put a certain amount of non-lapsing, there are some limitations that has to go to some educational purpose. I will look into see if they can set any limitations on that to say, you know, we're only at the level of, you know, improvements. Well, the current one does say that no improvements, right? If you consider, like, you know, the asphalt, or whatever, whatever. Well, we're going to need a new roof, we're going to need a parking lot. The tank is still empty around. We're going to need a new boiler at some point. There's no end to major capital improvements, and this building gets older and older.
Yeah, which is why we, you know, the first time we went to that one, we figured that would be inherently there with that means of like, yes. But I just, in reading the statute, it just struck me that it's not, it's not.
However, maybe always, and I have no doubt that moving forward, if we have additional special ed cost after the budget is there, and we can't cover it in our budget. So there's been some years we get to this point, and we had $100,000 plus additional unexpected cost. But at the end of the year, we have an extra $20,000. So we mitigated that. We gave it back to the town to say, we put this $20,000 forward, but they covered the rest, and they've never complained. They understand that they're obligated. We are obligated to live within our budget, and there are, you know, some exceptions where we have to go to the town and ask for more money. But if it's special ed money, we don't have to beg, we don't have to rationalize it. Except for law, they can make, they understand that they're obligated. So there would never be any issue to their point. They say, you know, maybe because of the capital improvements, then they can't take that special ed money out of it. They have to take it out of the town profits. But at the end of the day, it's all work or tax money, whether it's to build a bridge, or to pay for special levels, coming out of the same pot. But it just seems to be physically responsible for them to, if possible, put some money away for some of the big ticket items here, because we can't do that. Ideally, in the school budget, we'd say, every year, we're going to put aside X number of dollars and do capital improvements, and carry it over. So someday, when we need that big thing, we have money for it. But again, the town understands that when it comes to those things, we're not as privileged as they are.
So we're moving on to the remainder of your report.
I know this has been a long evening, people, and I want to make sure we have enough time for the budget presentation and for the pip presentations. Unless you've got questions for me, I'm going to go.
Yeah, so you said here Warren and I will facilitate a conversation about behavior.
Right, so we're going to move into the principles we put as a mind.
Oh, I see. Yeah, that's where we're going. So you said budget presentation, but you don't have the behavior. Yeah, I just wanted to get John a little nervous. And I do want to say this out loud. Remember, everyone, that the promotion ceremony is June 14th. Okay, so moving on to the principles.
Look, I'm going to start by introducing Mrs. Dubecky, who is going to give us a presentation on the PIP project that she has piloted this year. PIP stands for Personal Interest Projects. And Mrs. Dubecky was able to work with ed students so we could pilot this program for free. We looked at this as a way to bring the enrichment model, enrichment clusters modeled back to students in the upper intermediate grades, because we have a strong belief that when kids choose to learn about something that they're interested in, they maximize their achievement, and it's fun. So this aligns perfectly with this. So I want to thank Mrs. Dubecky for her enthusiasm and leadership in this area. I will see that it has been a big success.
So I do have to interrupt quickly. I know it was a free pilot, and we are planning to afford it. Do we have a price that we have to pay for this next year?
It's $25 per student. And then this year, since it was a pilot, and, you know, it wasn't a part of the curriculum, I got a grant from NSCC for $15 a student for materials costs. So that had to be an additional cost.
And it gives them our budget.
Yes. So it was a lot of fun to do this, and it was great to see the kids really, you know, jump in and pursue their varied interests. We had a lot of different avenues. But basically, so the advanced curriculum broke this down into three phases where the kids were really brainstorming, what is it that they're passionate about, that they want to learn more about? Then gathering their resources, doing research, you know, working within, you know, I have $15 to spend. What am I going to order, or what can I get donated from, you know, family or the community? And then the final part of it, they, oh, yeah. Um, and then the final, it's, uh, part of it, they, oh, yeah.
No, you don't have to point it off.
They actually worked on their projects, and then, um, decided how they were going to share that, uh, with the school, with the community. The, um, the three phases were broken down, there were four activities within each of the three phases. And Edvance really created a nice, um, software, software platform that the kids accessed, um, you know, online. And throughout their, you know, time working on their projects, they also each week were doing reflection, and, um, kind of really thinking about the whole process as they moved through it, through the PIP platform. This is kind of an example of what, of what it looks like from the student's point of view. Each of those, you know, four steps had, uh, a video that went along with it, and then, you know, we kind of broke it down together as a class with, you know, kind of interesting, if people were doing diverse things, like from, you know, pottery to fixing dirt bikes, to, um, writing about the environment. So, you know, how do we take these really, you know, wide range of topics, and then, you know, make it work with, you know, the reflection piece too? These are some pictures of PIP in progress. We had some students, um, just design things, uh, to be printed on a 3D printer using Tinkercad. We had several students choose to do Lego builds, uh, some were doing Lego Technic or Mindstorms, where it involved coding and programming, along with the actual Lego build. We had, this is Vinnie, uh, working on the dirt bike, which was actually here at school, thanks to Mrs. A. Uh, let's see, we have a student who, who went to work on drawing and did make, uh, the first chapter of a manga book. We had, uh, actually several girls who decided they wanted to make jewelry and then sell it to raise money for charity. Um, other students were kind of thinking forward in their career, what they wanted to do when they were older. This is an example of a student who wants to have a horse rescue, and designed, like, you first drew the model and then built it three dimensionally. And another one was, um, a sea animal rescue. So this is, basically, the, the kinds of projects were, could be broken down into four areas. Students who wanted to learn something, um, such as, you know, Lila learned how to play the bass guitar. Vinnie learned how to fix the clutch and hill switch on a dirt bike, restoring it to actually work with water. Um, solving problems, uh, so Kaylee made, this one was very successful. She wanted to help students who are hungry, because, you know, they forgot to bring a snack, or didn't eat breakfast. So she, you know, got donations of food, and had Kaylee's Kitchen in the nurse's office, and it has become a quite popular place. Yeah, um, this is an example of some of the, the rings that were made for the, uh, jewelry fundraising, and St. Jude is one of the places that a student donated to, and then, um, actually the local, we can't think of that, the church in town is another one. Uh, another, last example here, so, we're doing, Evan loves Iron Man, so he, um, found a model online of Iron Man, Iron Man's, uh, hand, part of his costume, which actually, when you 3D print it, it's amazing the different components, and you have to print many different parts, chip away the supports, and then assemble it back together, so he really got into that, and, uh, that was his doing. So, the final portfolio, which, there, there's going to be a share tomorrow, uh, at two, the whole school is going to be in the gym. The kids will have their Chromebooks, where they'll have their, uh, sort of their portfolio to share, and then their actual physical products. And I did an interest survey, so the younger kids got to say, you know, do a Google survey, what they were interested in, and then I paired them up, so we'll be doing small group shares, uh, with the older kids sharing with the younger kids, and then, um, they'll all have a chance to walk around and look at everything. Uh, but this is an example of Reese, who did the manga, uh, they all had to design a logo for their project. Uh, they had to write an overview, a thank you to who helped them, a, take a selfie and write a little bio, and then upload the final project. I just wanted to share, they also had to create trailers to generate interest, um, to get people to, you know, want to learn more about their, uh, their PIP project, and a lot of them did it on the iPads in iOS, we, some did it in Anna Bodo on the Chromebooks. So really, they're kind of using those skills that they've learned over the years as far as technology, and then putting it all together in this final share. So this other share, uh, raises. Lot of work done by Reese. So, um, I was really excited, it was a learning process along the way, they worked on this from the beginning of February through now. So, uh, we really devoted, you know, the whole second half of the year during their library slash maker space time to do this, and I hope to do it again next year, and to, you know, for them to share it with the rest of the school, and generate interest with the younger kids, so that they can see, you know, what they get to do when they're in effort, that you mean. Any questions about PIP?
This is really fantastic, and I, I felt like for the, uh, the curriculum night the other night, the kids were so proud of their projects, which I just feel like is, like, you see them want to show them off, and, uh, please, like, if you're giving them.
And then people are going to want to, and you have to go to that school, and it seems really easy for them to experience and see what it's like, and just.
Yes, and it actually works on those skills that they're going to need at the, um, at the middle school, because they're accessing things through their Google Drive, they're uploading, they're modifying, and, you know, they have to have those skills.
So it's a general.
Yeah. Right.
And this is a curriculum that's, um, designed for middle and high school students, so Edvance was really excited to work with us at the elementary level. Sixth grade, of course, is at the middle school in some school districts, but to work with fifth and sixth graders, I think this was an exciting opportunity for them. And when we met with them, they expressed a lot of interest in, you know, partnering with districts to integrate that with their fourth grade one, because this is something that with the right tools and student will enjoy doing, um, because following your own passions and using all the 21st century skills to do so is relevant for any major school, provided they have the resources they need. So, um, I just thank you, Mrs. Dubecky, this is a wonderful opportunity for our students, and I really appreciate your commitment and desire to do this work for them, so.
If it was possible, put that, your presentation begins, and I can put that up on the website.
Oh, sure, yeah. Oh, nice.
Share this really well, I'm going to be presenting, so.
Thank you.
And we'll be sure to take pictures and videos tomorrow, and maybe we can, you know, connect that with the presentation, so people see the full circle of the kids sharing it, with, you know, their, you know, classmates and friends and.
Someone from Edvance is coming, actually, on Thursday to, um, interview some of the students, because I think they are so excited that, you know, it's successful at this, uh, level with the younger kids. Um, so they're going to use us as their promotion of PIP as well.
If they make any promotional materials, if they can give us, obviously.
I will definitely ask.
All right, we can put that with our promotional materials too, that we've been working with Edvance, correct? Thank you.
You're welcome.
As you can see from the rest of my. At the end of the year, and, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about either, um, you know, things that are upcoming to do about, or upcoming events. And like, have any questions for me? Lastly, I just want to say, um, for those of you who are unable to, uh, come to the celebration of learning, what a wonderful night it was. It truly was a celebration of all that our students have learned, and to see our students, um, toe around their adults, uh, through their classroom, and to Maker Space, through the art show that was set up in the Hall of Flags, and lastly, to seeing, you know, the, the youngest students all the way up to our older students onstage, either singing or, um, in the band. It just, I, I don't think that there was, the place was filled with smiles, and the feedback that I heard from families and teachers alike was, what a wonderful evening, as well as, it was so nice to be back together as a whole school community in this capacity. And for staff who hadn't experienced this tradition, they said that it was one of their favorite events of the whole school year. So, it was a big success, um, and had a higher turnout than open house does at the beginning of the year. So, we were really pleased to have so many families doing this.
I thought it was particularly nice the way Mrs. Crush, uh, celebrated each of the students that were ready.
Yes, she asked, um, she asked if she could do that, and of course I said yes. She isn't able to join us, um, at the promotion, so I wanted to make sure that she was. Okay, hearing no questions, I thought that I would. Oh, yeah, we don't know yet, but I think we will have to soon, so, yes. Um, I hopefully, um, you know, by the sun.
Yeah.
So, were, are you going to tell us about the discipline?
I was, yes. So, um, I wrote something up, and I'm going to, you know, glance at it, and I'll share with you some information. I thought at first it would be important to have a little context about how our school discipline program, you know, what it's built upon, and how we, um, you know, how we do things at Hotel, before going on to kind of the question with regards to the survey. So if you'll bear with me with a little bit of context, um, I'm just going to give you that first. So, um, first and foremost, our discipline program is really built upon the understanding that emotions and relationships matter. Um, how we feel as humans affect our actions as of the quality of relationships that we have. So that belief undergirds all that we do with regards to student discipline. We utilize, um, some various approaches to shape our students' on behavior, and social emotional functioning, and Ruler is one of those approaches that we use. It is our social emotional learning approach that supports our students' ability to understand and manage those emotions. Those, that, um, approach is connected to the social emotional competencies of self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible attention, and those skills are taught and reinforced through the Ruler approach. We use, um, the Ruler tools, our school charter, the mood meter, the meta moment, and the blueprint to provide our students with opportunities to develop those social emotional learning competencies, and our school charter is the foundation for that discipline program, because it identifies how we want, how our students want to feel at Hotel. Our SOAR program connects to that school charter, um, because those are the actions and expectations that we will implement, so we can feel the emotions on our charter, which are happy, safe, welcomed, confident, loved, and excited. We created that charter with feedback from parents and students, so this is really an organic, you know, um, charter that really is unique to Hotel. So in order to feel those feelings on the charter, we, you know, SOAR, we show self-control, we offer kindness and respect, we achieve our goals, and we're ready to learn. We've identified what it looks like and sounds like to SOAR in various locations at school. What does it look like to SOAR when we're walking through the hallway, when we're eating in the cafeteria, when we're playing on the playground, when we're in the bathroom? Um, so, when we do that, the goal is, we all share a common understanding of what it means to demonstrate the, you know, kind of, rules of Hotel School, how do we manage ourselves in the building? What are the expectations that we have for our students? And by doing that, um, we're all on the same page, so to speak, about what those expectations are, so we can give feedback to our students to support positive behavior. Um, all of that feedback, that instruction, those expectations, again, shape our students' social, emotional, and behavioral function. So that's just a little bit of context about how Ruler, the tools of Ruler and SOAR kind of are married together to help support our students' social, emotional, and behavioral function. There are times, we all know, where students don't meet these expectations. So when that occurs, we again integrate the Ruler tools and practices to respond to, you know, uh, uh, times when kids misbehave. We do that at the classroom level and at the school level. Our goal in these situations is really all about helping students. Kids learn through a variety of responses, and our responses are really designed to help develop those competencies. We're not about punishing kids for skills that they don't yet have. We're about teaching kids to develop the skills they have through a variety of responses. So, one of the things that we do initially, when, um, students, you know, have a situation, is we use questioning to learn what happened in that interaction with another person, to find out what students were thinking and feeling. We help them understand how their actions affected others, how they can solve the problem, or repair the relationship. So, an example of that is when a student repeated, you know, say a student repeatedly interrupts instruction. The teacher would conference with that student using those questions, and they would collectively make a plan to solve the problem and reduce and eliminate the issue. I will tell you that nine times out of ten, when teachers talk with students, listen to them, and understand where this, you know, kind of misbehavior is coming from, that simple act of building and rebuilding that relationship usually leads to the behavior season. Because when we take the time as adults to understand our students, they feel heard, respected. We get to tell them how we feel, so they can understand our perspective, and by putting the onus on the student to solve the problem, they're doing the learning. So, um, you know, sometimes kids don't have any ideas on how to repair the relationship. Um, and we offer those ideas, would you like to do something special for that person? Would you like to write an apology? Would you like to go and talk to them? Would you like to, you know, do some sort of give back to the school? And by going through that process, it again helps develop those skills and competencies. Another example is, you know, if unexpected behavior, oh, sometimes things will happen during lunch or free time or during the, you know, during recess. In those situations, either the supervising adult, school psychologist, or I would also become involved. Another goal we have when responding to these situations is a natural consequence of misbehavior. When a student doesn't meet an expectation, we try to make sure again that they have an opportunity to learn that expectation through a natural consequence. An example of this is if students are running in the hall, they may need to practice walking in the front of the line with their teacher. If students aren't able to talk with their friends during lunch with an appropriate volume level, the student may sit at another table in order to keep the volume cafeteria at a manageable level. So that's kind of, you know, some examples and some context for what we believe is important about student discipline and shaping our students' social, emotional, and behavioral functioning. And so I just want to now kind of jump back into like those survey results and any questions that you might have. So when we gave that survey in the winter, one of the things that came out of that was we heard loud and clear that teachers were concerned about student behavior. So we revisited at a professional development and a faculty meeting, we revisited the SOAR expectations in each setting, particularly less structured times. So everyone was clear on those expectations. We also trained our instructional assistants on Ruler, SOAR, and behavior management strategies. Because, again, in less structured environments where those instructional assistants are supporting and supervising students, we felt like it would be beneficial to give them extra tools. And many of our instructional assistants are new. So they have not been trained on Ruler, SOAR, and behavior management strategies. We also changed our behavior log. So if a, you know, if a misbehavior occurs, there's a rule form that staff members fill out. It automatically goes to Mrs. Chabot and myself. We review it. And as part of the behavior report, it says, is follow-up needed by the school psychologist or the principal? And if it's checked off yes, then Mrs. Chabot or myself follow up with either the student or the staff member who referred to find out what the next steps would be. We use that behavior log to track individual students, you know, misbehavior as well. So we can look for trends. So we can say, well, we've tried this, this, and this. What might be the next response that we try? So it's a really useful tool. After we did those, after we held those professional learning sessions, the comments from staff were very positive. They felt like the time was well spent. You'll remember, I requested three half-days at the beginning of the year so we could spend time at the beginning of the year making sure that we had common understanding and alignment of how we were, you know, for one part of it at least would be, you know, our overview of our student, you know, discipline program, Ruler, SOAR, and other things. So again, we have the shared language, shared approach, and staff feels supported. We will, at the end of the year, we have staff surveys, parent surveys, and student surveys that are going to ask questions about our discipline program and student behavior. So we'll have another opportunity to analyze those results. And like we do every year, we use them to identify goals and next steps for continued growth. But I would say overall, at that time in December or January rather, I think one of the, because like I said, you know, earlier Board of Ed meetings, we have spent a lot of time on COVID protocols and that takes up time. So having some extra time, and we utilize this here, the professional learning at the middle of, in the middle of the year and the faculty meetings to kind of get on the same page with how do we do things here at Hotel? That was very helpful. So I see, I think another contributing factor to that was that at that time, we had some absences of our staff. And when their teachers aren't present and we have substitutes in the room, that throws kids off. They have a relationship and routines with their teachers. And when they're absent due to illnesses or COVID protocols, that, you know, that student behavior sometimes can take a hit. And I think that that's what we saw when we had the uptick in absences and COVID-related absences when we had a surge upon the return to school after the winter break. So I look forward to analyzing the data and seeing where people are, you know, now. But anecdotally, I think we're in a much better place. And I think the time we spent responding to the data that we collected in December was well spent and set us up for, you know, a staff that feels more supported and kids who are, I think, doing very well at school. And they're, you know, and those behavior instances have uncertain behaviors. Any questions for me? I know that's a lot of information.
So usually like, you know, in the way Jamie is kind of like, it's kind of. Am I noticing that I've read there's less instances of these behavior issues?
Yes, I mean, I, you know, today, I think, you know, each day brings a new success and challenge. So today at the intermediate level, there was, there were a few, you know, kerfuffles at recess. But, you know, I, there, there is not an increase in behavioral reports that come across Caitlin or my email by any means. There has, you know, we didn't implement the behavior log at the beginning of the year. So I can't speak about like since we've implemented it, but it certainly hasn't increased. It's remained, you know, kind of consistent. And I can bring that, I'm happy to bring that data back to the group of your interest in that.
So maybe you notice parents with specific kids.
Exactly.
When you do have to approach parents, you at least have to have a confrontation of, and this is the day, this is the instance. However, some teachers would class Dojo.
Oh, yeah, we don't.
Somebody picked their nose, right?
Yeah, nope.
And so that's, that was a bit much.
Absolutely. I feel like if it comes across my desk and it, you know, again, that box is checked, you know, follow-up from the school psychologist or principal needed, Caitlin and I collaborate on what happened and we determine, you know, is it the classroom teacher who is the best person to let families know about this? Is it, you know, is she the best person for it or not? And then we, we feel like our families want to know when, you know, something, not when somebody picks their nose, but when something major happens. Because families are on the same page with us. They want their kids to be well behaved and to be socially and emotionally, you know, proficient. That's a huge component to being, you know, 21st century learner. So I feel like that collaboration is hugely important. And when families know about situations that are important for them to know about, they partner with us to support us and support their child.
Yeah, so, I mean, for me, I think it's important that I should just feel respected by our children. Like they shouldn't have to, that be their concern. So I agree with the Ruler and the SOAR and the coaching, like the feeling. But going beyond it, when repetitive student that continues those behaviors, what is next step unfolding them accountable? Like besides talking, because I personally think they enjoy talking too. They enjoy talking to Caitlin. So they're finding that time, like, okay, I'm just gonna go talk to them and whatever. And they come in and they repeat the same behavior. So where do you go from there?
So we kind of use, I think they do enjoy coming to talk. However, when they have to do it on their time during lunch, sometimes after school, maybe it interrupts some of their recess. That is for their free time. You know, sometimes there's Free Time Friday or, you know, a time during the day where they have somewhere to waste time. When it impacts their time. So you see, that's the negative part of that. Because I'm, you know, our job is about protecting instructional time. So teachers sometimes respond to those situations right on, you know, right in the moment. And then, you know, then we'll look at the data, what it's saying. And what do we feel like is the, we've tried this, we're seeing that behavior again. So then we try something else. Sometimes I've had kids have lunch with me for a whole week outside the cafeteria. And, you know, when, I guess what I'm trying to say is when we recognize that the first attempt hasn't produced the desired result, we look at what is the next step we're going to take to help that student learn. And the times when they can learn that are usually at times that are, they prefer to be with their friends.
Yeah. I think, as we mentioned before, and John, we've looked at before about that they don't take the whole business time.
That's a law, yes.
So like, again, like just how, I guess, since you can't take the whole time, like how much is like the limit where you could, not to punish them, but have them reflect like, like you said, that we.
Yeah, we use that time sometimes, but legally, I believe it's at least 20 minutes of recess every single day.
So the law specifically said that you cannot take away recess time as.
But you can do lunch, like they can sit, you have lunch.
Basically still have lunch, lunch, right? But you can't take, it's the rule system. Ironically, the state doesn't think we're sort of about the not being as they. There's most of the age problems, but they're very.
How often do you find that students stay after school? Like, or have, have you had to have students stay after?
Very frequently.
And partly generally, because after school, we're very obligated to factor that, that's then the punishment for parents. That, you know, so depending on the situation, you know, if a parent has to leave work to come get their child, you know, home in the dark with the buses, but we do look at those kinds of things too. But I think that might be an important step is when we have, we can leave them at home, like their, their free time and other parents see all their family at school. You know, it's not that we don't do it, we just, you know, one of my children had it and the behavior stopped him for the first time.
Right, well, clearly, but it feels like they have to be accountable for something. They tend to, and like, like you said, people back school mom has to, yeah, you're not gonna be so pretty. Like I feel like almost, I was much more towards helping you unfeeling and not having them be able to behave your behavior. You know, do we try to help you that?
I believe we do. Because when we respond to the behaviors that are occurring and sometimes, you know, kids are gonna make mistakes. And when they make mistake, when they make a mistake one time and then it's addressed and it never happens again, that's the goal of the intervention. When I, when there's a student who makes the same mistake or continues to make multiple state mistakes over a period of time, we, we always respond with an increased level of response. Meaning, sure, is, is communication part of all of those responses? Yes, it might be a verbal discussion, there might be a written reflection, there might be, you know, a task that where the kids learn about, they learn about why. A lot of times kids will say stuff that they, they don't know what it means and they don't know why it's wrong. And so there have been times where I created assignments for kids. Here's why, here's the context for why what you said is incorrect. Then they read about it, we talk about it, they write about it. And then again, it accomplishes, first of all, they're doing that at their own home, you know, as homework. And the parent knows about it, whether they're doing it after school with me or over a series of lunches. And so, or there are times where, you know, the behavior is so significant, that doesn't happen very frequently at Hotel, that, you know, we go right to, you know, point at, you know what I mean? We bite them, you know, so we really respond to our students' behavior like we do everything. It's very personalized based on what we know about our kids and what we know they need to grow. And when we try something and it doesn't work, we try something else. And then we try something else and we try something else. But all of those something elses are usually, you know, directly respond, a direct response to what we previously tried. So we can again, you know, shape the behavior so it decreases. Then there's other things that we do too that we know kids need. Like certain kids need consistent feedback on their behavior. And so they have a behavior chart that they use. Those have worked wonders for some students. And next year, when we have our reset room, the sensory room set up, we're gonna strategically use that for students who we know might get in trouble just because they're wiggly. Or, you know, they have, you know, a content area coming up that they need to really get their mind ready for, you know? So we use, I guess, a lot of creative solutions to hold our kids accountable by teaching them what they need to know to be successful.
Well, we do that, we do that, you know, that can be the best analogy. But we have children who come to school with various stages of academic experience, ability, they learn in different ways. So if we have a child who's struggling with reading, we try to find what's the root cause because 10 kids can have difficulties with reading. There's all different reasons why. So we try to figure out what's the root of the problem. And then the teacher, we have strategies, you know, just doesn't look like anything else. And, you know, the word discipline comes from the Latin word disciplinae, which means instruction and training. It derives from the root word of seerae, which means to learn. And sometimes we don't think about the social, emotional, social skills as something that needs to be taught and which they learn. But we do know that, you know, kids do learn when you have a relationship, when you have a personalized response as opposed to punishment, which, you know, comes from the Latin word seerae, which means to punish, to chastise, to take vengeance, to put the penalty to cause pain on the ends. People do not learn when they're embarrassed, when they're having a game of football and they're feeling like someone's being vengeful for them. So we need to be fair, it needs to be respectful, and it takes time. And just like it takes time, sometimes in a week, you'll have kids on a third grade, you know, third grade that kind of don't feel they can't win. If our kids get bigger, we expect more of them. And we're not always, as I said, such a fact that this is a child that needs more personalized differentiated learning around social behaviors and apply discipline as opposed to punishment. So, I mean, one of the things that I really felt about, you know, one coming on board is that we really share this. And we had struggled a lot because we're gonna teach the poor ones, we was taught to, you know, do one thing. And confidentially, confidentially, we can't always help them, you know? Oh, we didn't do anything, you know? We didn't, we didn't just take back to school. And, you know, it's, it's hard because we can't justify that not anybody's real business. We can talk to parents about their child. We can't talk about other people's children. We maintain, you know, that kind of confidentiality and privacy. But it's a culture and it takes time for our, for our staff as well as, you know, for our kids. But one of the things that we realize, we need to do a better job, whether it's about, you know, staff members coming on and learning about our, about mobile age or about our discipline philosophy. We need to start to build these sort of series onboarding so that we have really planned, structured, comprehensive. Take that time for new people so that they understand where we're coming from. And again, I don't need it as an excuse if it's COVID, it's only been 20 and a half years. But it did sideline us, it was only so much time. We've had a lot of new people come on board the last couple of years. And, you know, so the things that were really important did get conducted. But we certainly need more, we forward a little bit, I said, and we'll make sure that we find that time. So when we get, we have our, our systems, our, our brand new, did we take time? Again, at the beginning of the year, they're mandated to have just to be in that, to be in that training. You know, bloodborne capogens takes precedence over, over something else. But, you know, we, we will figure out a way to, to dedicate that time to make sure that we, we provide that. And we staff, we continue to use the time before. We continue to use the time of the board of agendas to give us, to spend with our staff, to make sure that we're ongoing and in facility and waiting for saying, giving opportunities to feedback and doing things better. But, you know, steam behavior is a priority for us, you know, we eventually want to get to self-discipline and, and that takes time and it takes a lot of learning and kids learn in different places, it could be finding the different steam. So, you know, either the basketball, you know, as of, when we get those, you know, get those things that, you know, there's a little bit of, you know, encouragement and the people to be patient, that, you know, because we're not in the punishment business, we don't have a punishment policy, we have a discipline policy. Um, and, I mean, all things that we do, whether it's teaching kids academically or otherwise, you know, it's respectful, it's, it's caring, it's the relationship that the kid has, it's really caring, we can, at the end of the day, my kids go to school, those are the things that, you know, there's a wonderful angel of my organization. That people will give up a, a public program, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, it's not all up there. We want them to be accountable, but we want them to feel that they're fair and that they're respected and, you know, that we're not, you know, into a punishment.
Would you like to just say also?
I was just wondering, are there resources that, um, we, we, we can use at the school that would have strength within this carrier of the explicit instruction that happens here? Modeling and the clear expectations, are there family packets, are there family resources that can help carry over what is structured here into homes if that, if that would be helpful.
The first thing they need, they need, you know, the good ruler and the, the next day, if it's moving into the family, there's that share of packages. That's one way that we will be moving forward and kind of bridging that gap between, you know, the school, but there are certainly other things that we need to, 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 to.
You know, it's like they're all kind of uncomfortable, like, well, if there are another.
Duff lighting.
Yeah, exactly, when we breeze at a bar, like, maybe one kid for the core model, and then the other kids follow.
Sometimes that works out, when people say, why are you celebrating that with kids?
Yes, I think that we deliver.
Yeah, I, and we were doing that at Goodnes gatherings. We were, you know, teachers recognized students alternating months, you know, students who demonstrated our store characteristics, students who were persevering in their academics. And, you know, you, you do get some, you get mixed reviews with things like that. So we are really just trying to embed that kind of feedback in our everyday practices. So each kid feels seen and valued, um, you know, because again, little people, I think that's one of the reasons we moved the awards ceremony to the board of that. You know, these are little people who, um, you know, are very sensitive to how they're perceived. And, you know, when you celebrate one, the hidden message sometimes is, I'm not good enough. And that's never how we want our kids to feel. Um, so it, it's, it's a tricky balance, I think, um, uh, to think about kind of those external motivators and, and external recognition. So we've, we've tried to really think carefully about that based on feedback that we've gotten. Amy, I love your idea about family resources and, you know, like Mary got said, the ruler program is designed to be for families too. You came to the ruler over the last year, um, and your anecdote was certainly memorable. Um, we've, we've always talked about, like, um, you know, the sore characteristics and how you can soar at home and, you know, kind of maybe creating some sort of poster for families at home about how they can, you know, reinforce the behaviors and expectations at school. That's something we can definitely do. We have a document that, you know, identifies our, uh, school charter with the emotions and the sore traits and some examples of how we do that at school. That might be helpful to send home to families so they can reinforce that with their, with their children too.
We would be your mag- magnet of the future.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just wanted to say that I really appreciate this idea of like bringing a career thinking approach into discipline and teaching a child to think about that, other than being like, I love you, sort of, just like, you know, that's my big staff, like, you're thinking about, I think it really translates beyond just like discipline, like a skill that all our students need. But I think there's also, I don't know, I think one of you phrased it this way, inspirably, that there's like an equity angle to this as well. Like, our students, they have a certain need, like, they're reading deficient or whatever, we do whatever we can to meet those needs of the best people on that level, but we can't remember what they need. And with social emotional learning, I think it's the same exact thing, we have to, like, sort of think about that and the equity lives as well, because, you know, some of our students, they learn, they, you know, have a lot of friend who mentioned, like, how we eat super early and you don't eat much, you know, this food more. Just like, you know, we don't know where our students, that's sort of experience of social emotional learning and so it's, you know, I think it's really important that I try to give, that I show resources, like, this extra time and ability.
And I think, Jay, you're, you're also making me think that, you know, there are, just like there are students who have disabilities with regards to their academics, there are also students who have other neurodiversities, like ADHD or autism. And those neurodiversities shape how we respond. You can't punish a student for a disability that they have or a difference that they have. Punishing them for skills that we know they haven't yet acquired is counterintuitive to, I think, what we do as educators. Um, you know, so I, I just felt like I needed to mention that too, that, you know, when, when our kids come to us, you know, they come to us with a variety of needs and a variety of, you know, learning differences and, and different skills. And, um, you know, the, the teaching them what they need is the important message because, you know, punishing kids for something that they're unable to do yet because of where they are is, is not my, that doesn't match, but I know to be true, it's been good for little people, for big people.
Diagnosis tool, you know, so many of these issues are already diagnosed for so long. So I have this extra time that's spending these, these children having issues with, with the diagnosis.
Yep, and it has.
I think, um, I want to say thank you very much for, so seriously, the feedback that you've gotten from the teachers and taking success, speaking to the teachers, I think that's really um, and that's very strong, smart, and administrative approach. And I think that, I know the criticism, I'm sure you know about it, that discipline is unequally applied. And I think you talked a lot about, explained a lot about why it is a different, that, you know, approaches are accustomed. Um, but I think the act of keep having like formalized structure of, we have a Google doc or whatever you said, that we're tracking behavior is, is really smart and a very, um, you know, that, that process is important because that can, even though approaches are different, tracking in that same way is a very, um, you know, egalitarian way to look at, you know, children's behavior and figure out, you know, that's the impact. I just want to say that.
You're welcome.
Absolutely, and that's a word we use often, Janice.
I remember someone telling me once, oh, uh, you know, don't pay any attention to him, he's, he's doing that because he just wants attention. Let's say, if somebody wants attention, I mean, they need attention. So I would say that that time, like, if they enjoy spending, uh, lunch with you and they're behaving in order to have lunch with you, then that's probably a very good indicator that there's something valuable that they're getting from that personalized time that they really require. So, I, um, thank you for being able to figure out a way to make that work in your day, so that's not what we need to do. Anyway, well, thank you for that very, um, comprehensive, uh, uh, enlightening talk, um. Uh, is there anything else in your report that you can?
No.
Okay, all right, we've had a pretty long meeting, so let's see, let me ask what's here in our committee. Looking through here, personal technology, I forget what happened in the meeting. That's right, okay. Good as the time to be talking at the end of the meeting. Uh, policy, do we have anything, uh, we have to?
So we had a, a secondary schedule for the last month, but I was unable to, frankly, um, I felt it a lot ago, it meant for me, I went just behind. I'm wondering, it's okay, um, everyone, we may resume, we do a second meeting, um, in August, on the first policy.
Maybe we'll talk to you again, and it's important that we have this, um, book, if it's not monthly, go.
Dr. Now, for your place.
We've done a lot of the most specific keywords, so we can go through the office, but if everyone has read it, we pursue the requirements, but we didn't want, this is the second board meeting to address it. We could vote on it, we don't have to, if we don't feel that they want more time, we want some time to discuss it, we can certainly do that in the August meeting.
You lead us, Jay, you want to, shall we wait till the office meeting? It sounds like we can wait without.
Is there anyone, a chance to read it?
Every couple of them, and it didn't mean about the first one. I believe we adopted the first one. I ran through, I think, the first four.
No, this one, they weren't, they were, the first one is the only one that made what, for question, the other three, he said it did say.
Right, but we did adopt the first one, not forget.
No, no, we were, we were supposed to confirm a secondary and adopt it in May, we're unable to. So, yeah, I think the best, actually, the quicker, I, I just know it's been so long, I didn't know, we weren't publicating the reviews. Do you see it, or was there any comment on, um, drug alcohol free workplace?
I, I can say we agree.
In favor of they have the whole three, drug free workplace.
I believe you're correct, the policy really didn't change much, it's pretty much the same as what, as the previous one. Um, as far as the bus drivers now, well, we can, you know, stuff like that.
The bus driver was a different one, that's not actually the policy that you were reading, um, for, this is a, just in my general, this is a new policy.
But I think with the janitors, they were.
The bus driver wasn't getting to come up yet, but.
So how do we table this and we'll do it in August? And maybe could you send us a new copy of that?
Sure.
So then, um,
And maybe probably never.
Try to do a secondary, a drug alcohol free workplace. Um, in August.
But that's.
So a secondary, a drug and alcohol free workplace in August. And then in August, I would also submit for a first three, the next three on this.
Okay, so for August, we shall have read the, all four of them, right? We should come here, I think, read the four.
Is that, is that you in first three? For two.
And obviously, we'll give you copies of the next three and then, and then, but the next meeting in September, we can have a discussion and adopt it at that, that meeting.
Okay, I think our last policy meeting, that's what we, we read one, then we all agreed, hopefully read the other couple ones separate here to kind of adopt them.
That's what I said to me, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, so we're gonna wait until August.
Yeah, second, second week for drug alcohol.
Second rate, we got the first rate.
Yeah, Smith for first three, the next three on this as well.
Excellent, move over and thank you. Okay, uh, first Tuesday, so how was the health of moments? Were we supposed to meet?
Yes.
It wasn't in my head.
Seriously, are we having a hell of a month?
All right, Doris, I'm, I'm gonna blame who.
We are healthy and well.
I, I think we didn't have really anything.
We didn't.
Um, our communications, the committee, Janet is not chairing. See, it says the right flag if I say. And I think we should make a good strong effort for September.
I was gonna start that.
Um, is there anything you wanted to share from shared services?
Uh, no, we met and it's just we went on with a college that we lost, which artists have been from, the history of it, and the teachers, um, and it is the biggest thing was Penn, um, and what we lost, teachers and, over the time for any difference. Um, so that was the baby.
Um, okay, uh, and how about from the PTO? Well, we were supposed to meet last night, but we didn't meet last night and the thing is, we're in the living offices for much here. So the parents, we want to be the president, vice president, secretary of the Spencer one, if we use the meeting.
Parents or teachers?
Oh, all, all parents, all parents and teachers are, uh, members of the PTO. Um, and we're looking, working on a way to.
Yes, so there's two, there's, first of all, the talent show, by the grace of God, is going to come together, I hope, for Friday. And so everyone should come at six o'clock with an open mind and a happy disposition.
What is the reverse of that?
Tomorrow.
What time?
Three thirty.
I think we got this.
First time our staff is, like, there's not even a forum, I, my girls are graduating, Shelley Caddio and son is graduating that night. There, there's been a lot of, it's like, so very sad not to have a staff act, it sounds like for.
Jenny, that's your color, it's just reading. Thanks so bad, start playing the net. Oh, no, but that is Friday. That's Friday though, six o'clock, six o'clock, here on the stage for giving off on that, because that's extra complicated, so, the stage is all. Jumped in there. Okay.
And Janet, Janet and the fifth, sixth grade parents, also fabulous hands.
That's funny, absolutely.
We, uh, it was like over seventy five students from, right? Because I think we count, I, when I was up in front, we counted, except when we were kids being from here, Old Brook, we heard our campstead, Hart Room, and Winston, a lot of Winston.
We have a homeschool kid too.
Yeah, I know some magnet school kids, I know what magnet school kids that means. So this is great.
And I thought really overall it was quite well behaved and, and how embarrassing it was all there. Considering all the moving parts, I think it really was.
I'll share with everybody in here, like, bathroom duty, it's like.
Actually, I had that bright stuff, like, I'm laying out, we proposed it to social media.
Oh, it's just a thumb, somebody had to help us. I would like to say fake Tyler, really, because we cleaned up as much as we could, but I know there was some candy that we put in here on the floor and it was fantastic.
There was practice the next morning, yeah.
And the celebration, we're in the previous night. So it was quite a jam packed trifecta of events. But it went off without a hitch.
A special thank you to Amy, because I, the bathroom duty is the worst one and you did it without complaints.
Every day.
My mom just launched it, you know.
Uh, field day, are we doing the Brits stuff or is?
Well, uh, maybe I'll say about it.
Jen, in her text, I guess, the school is doing food for lunch and they'll bring the rest down to the field after, for field day.
But field day is real place for lunch. I can find out about food.
Yeah, she said that they have a theory, I wasn't gonna have it, and she might just take a couple.
I know that last year, they eat all the, but they just brought everything down and Tiandra gave it to the kids with her weapon. I know that advanced provided, we didn't do, PTO didn't do food last year.
She said, Hector is gonna buy an apple forages if you want, and they'll put it down by the field, so whatever they'll serve for lunchtime, but whatever extra they have will be sent to you.
So that probably just means that, you know, she's gonna divvy out what they need to sort of, man, that all staff and then.
And a couple of, I mean, I think.
Yes.
There is, there was talk of the PTO trying to organize, uh, helping with lunch that day, but that's not. In the past, in the past, um, the PTO a few times has, uh, PTO, and actually I think George Haller used to do it too, but, uh, grill, grilled burgers, hamburgers. It was really fun. It really was fun. Um, but it is also actually, I don't know, it's like, well, they say, so I don't know, it was like you two, you short notice to make this happen, but.
Well, we are, I will offer this, I am here all day tomorrow. There are some logistics that would have to be looked at because we order food, we've got lunch service, we've got all of that going on. If it's something that the parents want, have somebody contact me tomorrow, then we need to work out a plan and logistics because the cafeteria will have to know and the teachers will have to know. It's planning a little.
There's, there's people being, so it might be something. It might be.
I couldn't have been here for like, why?
I'm sorry. No, the, we were supposed to have a sync of the my teacher appreciation and reschedule, reschedule. So thanks to some of our parents, the teachers having, uh, this June. So we just want to show our, you know, we challenge to show their appreciations and teachers and students and staff, so. Okay, um, school safety and security.
So we met, um, for seventeen, um, uh, there's a evacuation drill coming up. Um, and we talked about the, um, some items that we need to create our communicating campaign with, Wi-Fi boosters, intercom speakers. And also talked about the license plans.
Yeah, Wi-Fi boosters, that's something to add to. We don't have that in there.
So communication with John, uh, that, or about a yellow, and they thought it was going to be a piece of place that's not working out. So we're going to go back to the third one, but we're hopeful that for a while that this area would be used very aside for the sound. Did you get that, um, in your talk?
Um, I don't, it's, it's, it's a.
It was from John.
I hear some sort of communication.
Not the, sorry, the area of, for some kind of booster or town, why something they thought this is going to be a great.
So yeah, so, um. For the new radios to the, that, uh, are, are used by the, by part of our, let's say, please, um, kind of works and services. Um, because of the, the nature of the, the coverage, um, photon might be a good site because of its elevation and the number of things, but that's to be determined that, um, they're experimenting with that.
What kind of tower is that? Is that a 5G tower or is the tower?
It's not 5G.
So actually. Like me getting.
It, it, it will help us with the, the horrible radio communication, um, although the school doesn't have those. Yeah, but, but the, the radios are from, uh, our dual band, so they've, they've worked with the, the band that the school has. But it's the band that only part of it and public works and people have to keep up with it.
Any questions about, um, radio, I both help now in the event that's, what's it here? Interfering with their straight communication, but they don't talk to anyone.
It shouldn't mention, um, yeah, I don't know. I think that the, the, they're all on one kind of campus, so.
But getting back to the Wi-Fi boosters, those were part of the advanced quote. So when Ian and, um, the advanced folks came, we, they asked a lot of specific questions about what we wanted, what was the most important thing. And that was definitely on the list. And so I'm confident quote will include that.
Okay, but yeah. Yeah, something else I keep needing to mention that this would not cost anybody, but I think we should print out just a piece of paper that says what the Wi-Fi password is and post it on every wall. Because I never.
Yes, to have it be posted in this room.
This room, the gym, the cafeteria, like any room that the.
There was some reasoning why that was, oh, you know what we talked about doing? Rather than putting the actual code there, having a QR code that you scan.
Okay, that's fine. That's great.
Okay.
Just something to the.
There, there was talk after I made that request and so I will find out where we stand.
Okay, and then who the more of the findings, uh, the more findings, sorry.
We can do a question, um, last one that, um, that Joe, the box is made from. Um, to address the question, what is it about the not happening now, not even with all of some of that? Had a very happy reservation. I expected we didn't have to have this for anyone myself.
Um, and the background, we're supposed to. All right, so, um, that is the end of our. I don't believe we have unfinished business. We've already managed our budget transfer new business need, so we'll be looking for a motion. Those in favor? Motion carries, thank you.